The meeting to uh to order. And our first order of business is department head reports Patty please. Oh we have to do a roll call. You're right.
Roll call.
Can you did it three, four times already?
Different order here.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Hello.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
In Tom.
Here. Okay. Leonard.
Here.
Manor.
Good.
Adam, you look weird on the end.
I don't know.
Reports and our senior administrator.
It's long, I apologize, but I want to cover some points.
So the good evening, everybody. Um, the evening's car charging station ribbon cutting. Uh, we'll be holding a ribbon cutting ceremony for our EV car charging stations here at Soul Lane Park in the city of Amory. Um, this event will be promoted by the city of Amory. Amory Chevrolet, uh, General Motor Company GMC Excel Energy and shared with the community for this exciting new addition to our city. Um, I'm anticipating this to take place over the next month or so. So I haven't gotten a deadline and when we have the the cabinets and such, but I'd like to coordinate this when we have a firm date on their installation completion. I'll keep you posted, so then we can set a date when we have our ribbon cutting and I'd like everybody to come and. Um, employee reviews, I recently conducted the employee reviews for my staff and department heads for the city. Uh, I will be conducting round two of our yearly reviews in August. Um, I've been quite impressed with the staff and department heads work ethic. Um, and we should all be happy with the tremendous um employees we have here at the city. They're good hard workers. I appreciate all of you very much. Um sewer rate increase. I'm working closely with Ellers to do the business of sewer rate increases. The council will be updated on the process of the sewer rate case study at the June seventh city council meeting. Uh, there was an airport commission meeting today at nine. Uh, we will be starting work on the master layout plan for the airport at the June fifteenth meeting. The most recent improvements taking place at the airport are crack ceiling of the runway, taxiway and aprons. Um, we're starting to get bids on those now, so that process is starting. Recently had discussions with Hal Davis. He's the airport compliance manager. Of the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics, I can't even talk. Um, he advises the airport on compliance issues. Last year, there was a fly high X event held at the airport throughout the summer and early fall. Because of the grant opportunities through the DOT Bureau of Aeronautics and the grant assurances that we signed. Uh, for the city of Amory, I believe that no non-aeronautical events will be taking place at this time. Which would include the fly high event. So if you hear rumblings that they want to have this event and this, I'm saying no. Um, it can have bad consequences for us putting in all that new work, so. Um, capital improvement plan, I am working on an updated capital improvement plan for the city of Amory. Our current capital improvement plan needs an overhaul, like I mentioned. And I would like to see movement on that in the near future. Um, these are several of the, there are several of the items from that plan that Ben and I have tackled and completed. Uh, reviewing the needs of the city moving forward. Um, this is more or less planning documents for the city financially. And that would help us to see in the coming years what we need. Once it's complete. Uh, we will review with all of you. We're starting that process. I've been in talks with Baird and getting our financials together and I think it's going to be a nice, healthy document. Justifications for what we need and why we need it. There'll be meetings with all of you, department heads and everybody involved, so. Um, citywide electronic sign, um, still working on this with the sign committee on some. Sign, a potential sign with some of the community leaders. Um, Chuck's part of that committee. Uh, we ordered the electronic sign and now we're working on the general design, so it's coming together nicely. Uh, we are hopeful to have it up and running mid to late summer. Uh, it will be loaded, located at the fire hall, so it'll be a nice location where people can see it and the funding is being obtained. And we will figure out donor involvement in a business plan moving forward, so that's exciting. Um, Amory Community Club Past President's banquet. Uh, the Amory Community Club is holding their past president's banquet this Friday, Friday evening at six. Uh, this will be held at the Brau Tyne Restaurant. I have attended in the past and. I'm always impressed at the hard work that they put together for this or this event. There's a lot of individuals and organizations that are remembered and appreciated that evening, so it's something to see and be a part of. I really think it's kind of cool. Um, and the City Managers Association Summer Conference, I'll be attending that June twenty first through June twenty third. And in Green Bay, home of the Green Bay Packers and John. Coon is going to be there. So that's kind of cool. Um, try to, I will try to attend the meeting here virtually with all of you and I'm really looking forward for the training opportunity, so and upcoming events, Memorial Day were closed. Offices here are closed, uh, council meeting on the June seventh at five and June twenty first committed the whole at five, so any questions?
Um, have you figured out content for the sign? Who manages it? Who's gonna put stuff on here? How can you get stuff on?
This plan, yep, yep, so we're gonna try to keep it as few as possible because more hands get in there, the stickier it gets to become, so. And we want to recognize all the sponsors. Um, it'll flash them on there. We haven't decided if we'll do it once a month or. But it's, it's gonna be really nice, really cool sign, so. Yeah.
Patty, well, you talked about the EV station.
Yep.
Uh, will city be billing for that or is that gonna be direct billed to XL or how does, how does? Um, when you plug in, you, what's the rate, do you know or?
I do not know the rate right now. But I'm working with XL on that as far as our usage and um we will get a, we'll kind of get a rate schedule.
It'll be like a credit card machine on the thing and you buy so many minutes of time or so.
Yep. So very minimal cost to the consumer. But um it will help us with the maintenance of the electricity for that, so the costs.
One thing that I'd just like to add is Patty talked about reviews. I also did Patty's too.
Yeah, yep.
Uh, the reviews.
Yeah.
You talked about department head reviews. I also did Patty's, so.
Yeah, childhood mine, so. Anything else? Okay.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Patty. Ben, Clerk Treasurer.
Hi, I'm Charlie. So, first off, open book and board review are right upon us. Actually, open book is tomorrow. Uh, from ten to twelve, it'll be, well, probably right there. And then uh, board review will be next Thursday, the twenty fifth, and that's also from ten to twelve, so if anyone has to come down for open book, that's the time. Uh, I will also be going to training in Green Bay in June. I will be going to the Clerks Treasurers and Finance Officers Institute. Uh, that's offered through the league municipalities. I went last year and it's been the best training I've ever been to, so I really wanted to go again. Uh, the Arts Parks and Rec Committee will begin holding meetings at all the different parks in town. We were gonna be on Monday, but we had some stuff come up, so I only got postponed, so we'll be going forward. I think North Park's gonna be the first one and then uh, we'll see where they want to go from there. And then finally, I've had a ton of permit and building calls lately with Dan. I'll still hear you can tell you, I've had all sorts of people coming in to do. Everything, so a lot of fences, sheds, siding, roofs, you name it. A lot of stuff can be going on this summer, so. There'll be another busy year for building projects. That's about all I got. Anybody got?
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Thanks. Steve. Chief Police. Don't make it take too long.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Uh, well, for a month of April. That uh, two hundred ninety calls of service. Uh, averaging thirteen per day. Three misdemeanor arrests, two felony arrests. So you may think that's not a lot, which is good. So uh, that means crime is down for the most part. Uh, one was an OWI fourth offense, so obviously that person has, needs some rehabilitation. Uh, and a substantial battery, uh, the domestic issue. There were eighty-five traffic stops, twenty-four citations issued, sixty-one warnings. Those numbers might be alarming a little bit, but I'm a firm believer that. Brakes can lead to a behavior change. If you're, if you're applied properly, so we want to change people's behaviors, so they drive through the city safer. That's the ultimate goal of that. Twenty-nine uh, new cases investigated, eleven were sent to the district attorney's office, referred for charges. Um, not many uh, drug issues uh, for the month of April. Now we have two possession marijuana and uh, one possession of drug paraphernalia, which was a marijuana pipe for that. Eleven juvenile or school responses, which resulted in a multitude of citations for vaping and for truancy. Uh, letters were sent out to the parents as well to try to combat that. Um, obviously with a lot of the kids that are getting truancy citations and vaping, there's issues going on at home. Uh, that need to be addressed. We can do so much as a community to do, address that, but sometimes the. The, the, at home is where it's gotta happen, so hopefully they're getting the resources they need. For mental health, there are only two transports. Uh, which was good and they were both in county for April. Um, five transports for the county jail, so that was for the arrests. Accidents, we've had five. So that may seem, I guess, kind of a, I don't want to say high, but it's, they're still happening. But two of them, one of them was inside of a parking lot, so and another one was uh, someone hit a parked vehicle. So with the enforcement and the brakes that the officers are out there doing and the traffic enforcement, uh. We're not seeing uh, many accidents, so I think that's good. Uh, summer's coming, so we're gonna have more people driving through. Policies are back again. I'm still working on those. Hopefully to be and start implying I have. At the uh, appointment with Deer Creek Technologies next week. Uh, so we can hopefully start implementing the chapter one policies all, or the week after that. That's in motion. A deer decided to attack our squad car, so that's uh. Gonna cost us a lot, so that's gonna be dropped off on Monday. And uh, that's gonna be fixed. Have a new graphics on one of the old squads, so that's gonna match some of the graphics that we have on the new one, so eventually our fleet's gonna all look a, look alike. So I think it's important. Uh, zero citizen complaints. Yeah, it was yesterday, we had firearms training, so I. Had a phone call from the last time from someone that they weren't notified, so I drove the squad around yesterday and personally delivered all the letters of all the firearm dates to all the surrounding mailboxes to give them heads up. Uh, so I think that was probably the right thing to do. Uh, I'm sure we didn't get in time for a couple of people, so, but I wasn't here to answer the phone for that. Uh, have lunch tomorrow with Northwest Journey. So it's trying to extend more community policing, community service out there. I also had donated some coffee with at uh, the retirement. Uh, I forgot the name, is it Manor? What?
Old and age.
Old and age Manor. And that was, that was very nice, be able to do that. And then uh. Plans to go to the Chiefs of Police Conference in August for more training. And. That is it so far, oh, and I'm working on all, getting all the licenses that. Someone over there keeps on giving me. Back like that, but it's fine. For backgrounds, other than that, uh, that's news of the police department. Any questions?
You guys at Hudson?
Excuse me?
Were you at Hudson?
Oh, I, I was not personally, cause uh, about a month and a half I made a. Plans to go to the school for the middle school for the four K orientation, so we had some officers representing the department. Yeah, I was ready to go and I checked my email and. Thought that was important too, so yeah, it's just another unfortunate. It's a tragedy, but it was, it was another officer stolen from us. That shouldn't have happened, so just terrible.
Thanks, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Chuck.
Evening.
Hello.
Hello Chuck.
Uh, myself and three officers went to electric vehicle training. Um. Few weeks ago and we did cover charging stations, or they did, so um. Pretty simple, starts on fire, fire extinguisher only. Shut the switch off, call the electric company, probably what you can do for those cars. Um, the training was actually pretty good. Um, it was, it was pretty much just an eye opener training. Um, they have so many different branches of, you know, fire extrication that they. That's what they're geared towards. This was just an over overview of everything. But they had, oh, they had electric truck, they had like, uh, cause Pope Burnett does own uh. A Ford Lightning, which is an electric vehicle. And then there were five Teslas and a Volt there, yeah, it was. It was really interesting because it showed us. Where the cut areas were, you know, the orange. But depending on what model it is, is gonna depend on where it is on the car. And we also have to find out what the model is because some of the high voltage comes wrong. The bottom of your, on the outside of your car and some comes down the center of your center console. So it's like. There's no federal regulations yet or standardization yet, but they're trying to get that through the federal government to get that changed, so they are all the same. You're dealing with federal government, no, that's gonna probably gonna take, I'll be retired by the time that comes out. Uh, yeah, so it was really good training. I'm glad we went and then we've come back and we kind of walking through, um, when there is a car that's on fire. Where the location of the smoke is, if it's in the hood, don't worry about it because that, what it does, it, uh. The car is designed to hold an ambient temperature to the battery in between a hundred and a hundred and four degrees. If it's hotter than that outside, you'll run coolant through it to keep the battery cooler. If it's colder than that, you'll run heat through it. Winter time, steam comes out, people call in saying our car's on fire and it's just steam from it heating the battery. Center of the car, yeah, you got a problem. To the car up roughly forty-five degrees, take your thermal imaging camera, find the hot spot. Put water on it for forty-five minutes or eight thousand gallons. If it doesn't go out. Let it go. Cause you can, do you remember the cut loop does? It takes the power away from the rest of the car. You will never de-energize that battery. That battery will always be active, even if the battery was totally, and they showed a car accident. The battery actually flew off into the guy's yard and it was still energized.
Hmm.
So, yeah, they are dangerous, for sure they are dangerous, but. We got a little bit of training dangerous, but as far as the charging stations going, well, we'll be ready if. It does, if it does hit the fan, we'll be there. Uh, Monday, actually, too, we had Pope Burnett, this past Monday, we had Pope Burnett down for power lines down. Um, which is now we're in the storm season, so. Yeah, so that was a pretty decent training, a little bit more than uh. A little tabletops we used to have that Danny Lumen used to put on for us, but uh, it was, it was pretty good training too. Uh, Community Fire came in, hey, serviced all our fire trucks or our pumps, um, greased them, um, so they're all good to go. Uh, I have been getting a lot of calls about burning permits. Um. Burning of brush. I mentioned this before, in the city limits, no burning of leaves. Um. No, please don't. Um, if you're wondering if you can get a burning permit or not, there is a, uh, an app or a website, it's D N R dot W I dot gov slash. WISB U R N, and it tells you what the current fire situation is in the state of Wisconsin, and it goes by counties. If it's very high like it is right now for us. I'm, and you call me, I'm gonna tell you, I highly suggest you don't burn at all. Because it can just spread that quickly, and if it's red, no. Absolutely not. No permits will be given out if it's red. Um, so go there, look at it. It'll save some people a lot of hassle, um, but that's a pretty decent website. That's one I use to find out what our situation is, so. Other than that, that's all I got. Any questions from y'all?
Do you have any plans or is there a thought to bring some of that uni training local to the, to the fire halls, cause?
Um, when we were done with the class, you could, you had a, a screen up there, you, you scanned it. Um, the four of us that went will get a certificate, but it also gives us information. On other classes that we can actually take, and we would like to bring some of them into our station to give us. Or thorough in-depth training. From this company.
Yeah, it's, it, it's dangerous to the firefighters.
Well, you, you, yeah, well, not only that, but just think, I mean. I mean, you take a look at California, was it twenty thirty? You can't even buy a. Gas operated car, it all has to be electric over there, so I mean. There's gonna be one more electric coming out and all the party departments need to be prepared for it. I, I mean, it's gonna happen. There's gonna be accidents, fire, it's gonna happen, so. Yeah, it doesn't scare you. So. Anything else? Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Chuck.
Heather, please, the library director.
Hello, everyone. Uh, it's been another busy month at the library. Since we last met, we've had thirteen educational programs or events and a total attendance of four hundred and twenty-one people. And a lot of that was the entire sixth grade class came for a visit and then the elementary school kids came to visit, but also to learn about the summer reading program. So that's what I really wanted to tell you about tonight. Um. I want to talk about why summer reading programs are important. And why it's great that the library has your support. And anybody that can spread the word, encourage people to join, it's really helpful. So it might look like we're doing a lot of fun and games. There's gonna be lots of kids running around the library all summer. They're gonna be having a great time. But also, they're going to be learning some really important skills. And I wanted to cite just a few pieces of interesting information. I've got the full packet that I gave to all of you and it's got the sources. But these are some of the big ones, so we probably have all heard that most studies show that. If you read over the summer, you don't learn, you don't lose as much learning. And then studies have shown that children who live in poverty, which is a fair amount of our Amory School District population. They're more likely to lose their reading skills over the summer than children who don't live in poverty. So we really need to look out for those kids who maybe don't have the support at home that they need. Um, other researchers have estimated that fifty to seventy percent of the achievement gap for children living in poverty. And children live of color is a direct result of summer reading loss and summer learning loss. So it has a huge cumulative impact on youth. And then the next thing is children don't catch up to their peers in the fall. They found that by the end of sixth grade. If children have lost reading skills over the summer, they are two years behind their classmates. That's a big deal, and these children now are the people that are gonna become adults, hopefully people having families or opening businesses, supporting our community, bringing in tax dollars. So it's so important that we have great summer reading programs to keep kids engaged. Keep them learning and to just let them know, you know, you don't have school to go to, but you can come to the library. It's a safe place, it's a welcoming place. So we're trying really hard to bridge this gap between when the kiddos get out of school and then when they start with school. Uh, we have some age-specific targets for the summer reading program, so the little guys. We work to help them prepare by developing their early literacy skills. They don't develop those early skills, they're gonna be behind. They're not gonna like reading because it's hard and then they just fall further and further behind. For the slightly older children. The activities and the programs for summer reading are designed to build on their. Learning skills, their reading skills, their language skills. So they've got some, but we're just encouraging them to build and get better and better. Um, for teens, we're focusing on motivating them to read. Which some teens love it, some teens, you have to really hold their hand and help them figure out what do they want to read and what do they want to be involved in? And then also to get them to discuss literature. Because believe it or not, it's kind of fun to talk about books. If you like books, if you find people to talk to, you share ideas and experiences. And then for adults, we're focusing on encouraging them to read for just the joy and the enrichment that it can bring to your life. I've shared several packets with you. There's a reading log for adults, there's a reading log for kids, so that gives you an idea of what's going on at the library. I believe Brooke included a calendar of events with her kids packet, so we've got stuff going on all the time during June and July. And then you can also join and track your reading and activities on an app called Beanstack. That we are a part of, you can go to our website, once we turn that part live and you can do your. Reading and logging that way, so just here to really push anybody, if you ever have a chance. Encourage a kid to join the summer reading program, encourage a kid to come to the library during the summer. There's gonna be a lot of really fun stuff going on and um, I think it's one of the public libraries missions and one of my personal life missions is to try to make sure that kids don't get behind. So that's why I'm really excited about summer reading. I think it's our biggest chance to have a huge impact on the children in our community. Any questions about summer reading or anything else that we're doing? Yeah? Okay.
I, I thought for a minute there you were gonna advocate for year-round school. Yeah.
But um, I'd be on board, I think.
Each of our colleagues would not be happy that I would agree with them, but I'm happy with you.
I understand. Anything else? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, Director of Public Works. Jeff. And uh, it's nice to say it.
Yeah.
I won't say it anymore, I just.
That doesn't sound right. Hello, everybody. Uh, it's been busy again this month. The dam is completely repaired. We replaced the cables, the winch, the chains, well, everything should be good now and it's back to the operating level. Been getting a lot of calls and complaints, but it is where it's supposed to be. Um, we've had to spend a lot of time in the parks. This, the docks are getting in bad shape. We've replaced or repaired three of them. They're in and they'll make it through this year, but next year we gotta do some looking. The ban shell, got the wall all stained up. So that's looking good and we're gonna put that up tomorrow. Um, and a lot of thanks to our new electrician guy, he's been helpful too. Can't think of Jeddah. And we had three sewer laterals fail this month. We don't actually do the work, but we gotta be there to make sure they compact the soil, hook everything up right, so that takes a lot of our time up too. Uh, we had a water main break. Got a hydrant ran over by a semi this winter, we got that repaired. Uh, been looking at the airport, trying to get their bathroom cleaned up. We had a lot of roof leaking last year, so a bunch of mud being put on that and cleaned up. Other than that, we don't have any summer help to speaker right now, so the guys who've been out mowing and cleaning bathrooms and doing all that and sweeping streets, patching and day-to-day stuff. Any questions?
Um, when do you do prep for the new bathroom? So when is that gonna happen?
Rooms will be digging Monday. So pre, very much prep, we got that going. We got a guy coming in to do the concrete right after we get. Levelled off and then we'll dig the water and sewer into them and plumber will come in and hopefully by June fifteenth. If everything goes good.
Yep.
That's for both.
That's for both.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I would, the one over here. At Soul Line Park. The options are to have it. Six feet from the curb. Or we have to maybe move it. I know that's awfully close to the curb. On the street, but with power going through the middle of the park.
Hmm.
And then laid out the way that that's what we're gonna have.
Six feet from the curb or what?
Or we move it to a different location in the park than we had planned and then. We just had to have to redo, you know, I know we're talking about redoing Soul Line Park a little bit. But if anybody's got any input or anything, now's the time.
Hmm.
After that one, that one that's going in there, does that have an option to do any heat with that or is that? Just a shower. Yeah, cause there's no showers in those, yeah. This. Off the top of my head, thinking about the. No, about up till uh, Thanksgiving when we have the big.
Yeah.
You know.
Oh, we could maybe probably, we could bury it low and see what happens.
Maybe it isn't that important, but you know, there's a, there's an awful lot of people to go back and forth across the street there to. Look for a bathroom.
Hmm.
Let's find trees next year. Well, I guess, like you say, if anybody's got any opinions or options, take a look at it and let me know if you, what you guys think.
You have a proposed layout someplace that we can take a look at besides up here?
Make one.
I mean, that'd be helpful.
Six feet from the curb seems awfully close.
Well, then we can do what usually happens and we just wait until. Well, then we can do what usually happens and we just wait until.
What is inside?
And is it, it would be that? I don't, I don't even know about orientation of the building. Is it gonna be?
Can I say this easy?
North, south or is it gonna be east, west?
East, west, you'd have the twelve feet going north and south and the long part would be east and west. And it would be pretty much right where the bushes are. You got electric charging stations here and we put the bathroom.
And so would it be, it would be the doors facing center?
I thought we'd put towards the park. It would be just the one maintenance store that would be near the.
Oh, so more or less it's a blank wall. Okay, that's not so bad. That's not so bad.
That would be the easiest and cheapest way to put it in.
Yeah, it's just parking areas anyway.
Does that have the, does that have the full brick on it on the outside?
Just like the one in North Park. Like it's like half brick and then it's got fake wood on it.
The campground's been busy.
Yes, it is. There's six of them up there right now. Moving along. Thank you.
And Taylor. Way back there.
Alright, a couple of Fridays ago, Ben and I attended training in Rice Lake. That was like clerks and treasurers kind of combined for a conference. We talked about a variety of topics and colluding border review, which will be handy coming up. And then they also had MSA there and we were actually part of their slideshow with our Keller Avenue project with all the stuff that we did and the work with them for that. Um, if you have not paid your bill yet, please do so. Utility bills were due on Monday. Um, I'm sure there's still quite a few out there that haven't been paid yet. So if you haven't done that, please do so. If you can't pay it in full, please come into City Hall and set up a payment plan. We are moving to work with people if you can't pay your bill right now. We'd rather work with you than have to disconnect you. And then liquor license, the actual applications, we asked for those to be back by Monday. So we have gotten those back from everybody and can work on going through those and looking to make sure everything's filled out correctly. We still have operators licenses that are flowing in. We've probably had about half of them go up half or maybe even a little more go up to the police department so far. So there's still more to come for him to sign off on. And there's been a lot of talk lately about people's dogs. So if you have a dog in the city of Amory, please be sure that you have it licensed with us. Um, it is, it'll be ten dollars now since it's after the end of March, if it's spayed or neutered, otherwise it'll be fifteen. But it's important to have those dogs tagged so that if the police department does find them, they can return them to the rightful owner. There's been a lot of them that have been ending up in the Humane Society I've seen, so. And if you do have a pet dog, make sure you're looking at our ordinances so you know how to properly keep that dog in the city. So. Any questions? Yeah.
Dogs have to be on a leash, correct?
Yes, dogs are supposed to be leashed. We have a leash law here. So. We do not license cats. We're not supposed to, I'm sure, let them roam, but we do not license them, so.
Thank you.
For the uh leashes, is that on your property as well?
I have not read the ordinance in depth to know for certain, but that is something that I'm sure we could look into. It should be listed in the ordinance.
Okay, I'll check. Thank you.
Okay. Number two, resolution, resolution zero five twenty twenty-three, resolution accepting ten tools of civility. This is in our email.
We want to have a good run meeting with no problems. We haven't had too many. I know I can look back to maybe meetings back before we moved into this building and some of those were contentious. This kind of follows the template of Duluth Superior. It's getting to be more common for us as council and people that are attending the meetings to just realize how meetings should be run. So this is just keeping everybody civil.
I think there was a what in the municipality magazine that was covered a number of times, uh, the Gallup actually wrote them.
And I think we should follow suit. I think uh we're getting big enough and there's enough issues that go on in the city that it just reminds everybody. And what I'd like to see is if this is approved, we hang it up. And people that come into the city and they attend these meetings, they sit in the meetings, they can kind of see what we expect.
You'd like to say that these things are common sense, but sometimes these things need to be stated out loud more or less and, and make sure that it's out there in front of people.
So I just think you know, others are doing it. I, I would like TCS to it. So that's kind of why I propose it. So there's a policy and there is a resolution. They kind of tie in together. So it gives everybody the and I think we, we put them up there on full display. We've got two billboard, billboard, uh billboards here and we can put those up with other notice too. I think Ben and I are gonna start making sure that everything is more apparent here in this, in the council chambers. So that's, that, that's that.
I would make the motion to approve that.
The resolution.
Yes, uh, zero five dash two zero two three.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution zero five twenty twenty-three and send it to. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Um, is the city venue meeting policy is just a statement? That gets it out in, in public?
It is a policy. So is it gonna have like a is it just a policy that we're approving? Is it going to be, where is it? Where will it reside? Uh, we will put it on our website. And we'll put that on there along with the resolution and we will keep it here at, in city, city council chambers so that the public can see it too. And if anybody wants a copy, we can.
Is the meeting policy replacing something we currently have or is this just all new going with the civility?
The one thing that I'd like to see modified maybe a little bit is about the comments will be limited to a one five-minute comment at the beginning. Um, that to me isn't very clear. Is it only a five-minute public comment period? Or is it five minutes per? And it seems to make sense to me that depending upon whatever topic is that potentially is being discussed, that the chair of whoever is uh meeting sets what the time limit is based upon uh.
Yeah, numbers sometimes, yep.
Um, I think the other thing that would be nice if somebody is going to have something in a public comment, that they have to write it down as they come into the meeting so that can be brought to the chair so they know what's coming up for public comment.
And I also think too, and this is pretty common too in meeting places, um, you should be part of the city if you're having a comment.
But, or at least related meetings are part of the city, right? So if you have somebody from the uh women's club that doesn't live in the city, we don't want to preclude them from talking about that either, so.
Related topics or you are a resident of the city. We don't want somebody coming in here from.
There are a number of issues, all the people right on the outside of the city, i.e. the, the airport, uh, when we expanded the airport a few years ago. Um, that brought in all kinds of folks from Blackbrook and uh so on, so on.
It's supposed to depending on the topic.
You know, it, it is, um. That's the way to get to be a real unpopular administrator if you, you know, shut people off like that, but, but there are times it's certainly necessary.
I think with some of those modifications, I would make a motion to approve it or forward it to. Like city council. City council.
Is your second? Has changed or?
What do you need?
I'm not, I'm not seconding it because I have a a question.
Okay.
I would draw my motion.
Um, I just question, um, if when this goes into place, um, we already have um on our agendas that uh public comment is limited to ten minutes total. Or speakers present at the meeting, but if we're gonna be limiting comments to five minutes, it's only allowing two people to talk. And I don't necessarily think that that's enough time.
So amend the agendas moving forward.
Yeah, I feel like if, if we're gonna put this into place, um, for some reason I thought it said three minutes at some point in time. Um, but comments were limited to three minutes, which.
Think, yes.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I think that either this needs to be amended or this needs to be, but either this could be changed because only allowing two people to talk in a public forum and is, well, I mean, I hope it's enough, but it, it isn't always, so.
Okay.
So I will second this as written with, I think, what you're gonna change a couple of the words, keeping in the five-minute comments, but then I think this.
Andy will have time to.
Wait a minute. So I had made a motion. Now you're making the, and so you're making a motion that we keep it at a five-minute limit in total? Then I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Okay, motion is made to with adjustments to, um, as noted to approve, um, the city venue meeting policy. So any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah, you know, whatever's written down, somebody's gonna have something to say about it. Okay, coloring of the parking discussion.
Alright. Um, just in front of uh stems from the heart, I think is what it's called on Main Street. They're parking there. I've talked to Ed White. And what we're gonna do, cause he's already was pretty sure that you couldn't bark anywhere. We're just gonna paint it yellow and put up a little parking sign just to delineate it, let everybody know. I've talked to Ed and he's okay with it.
They have parking off, off the street too, so. It is an awkward spot.
And you block the bike lane.
Yeah, and it's right at the stoplight, more or less. Yep, that's, that's a good call.
Comments?
No, I, I fought that battle. That's right, so. Okay, we'll get you for that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, thanks for, thanks for recognizing that and, and taking action. That's, that's important. Alright, legal services for the city. Where are we? It's on here.
Baki Norman. Um. And do we want to continue with Baki Norman? We, we need a contract of some sort, something that we have in to keep going. It's, it's old, yeah.
Yeah, is it something that we just, and we refresh it and, and see what's?
I'd like to see the, you know.
You know, discuss it after you get that information to us. You know, casual is okay until it's not.
Yeah, no, there should be a fee, but and.
Yep.
It's probably outdated.
Yeah.
Um, cause I don't think there's been one since I've been.
Yep.
We will give you an updated one.
Um, I guess I'll ask the question then too, since I have been needing to contact you guys and for a couple of different issues. Um, is there currently? One, I mean, are you our main point person, Paul? And what is the best mode of communication with you? Is it email? Is it telephone? How are you wanting to be communicated with? If it's Lindsay, we should be contacting, I mean, I guess the, there's oftentimes questions as to who we should be contacting and how do we communicate with you? Okay.
Lindsay has taken the point on. Those things, you call.
Okay.
You're in contact all the time.
Right.
You know, if you hear about that, so I pretty know I'll call them. Well, give your opinion on that. We'll go back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting then, and then we can approve or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes we don't always think of that first. You know, there's sometimes that we should probably ask the question first instead of struggle with it for a while and then deliver a really complicated problem. Which we're probably good at. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's that for that one. Okay, um, thank you for being here. Public comment or update, security updates, anything? Anybody needs or wants to tell us about? Apparently not. Okay, brings us to our closed session items under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub C. Police Department considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body is to a distinction or exercises responsibility. Need a motion to go into closed session.
Make that motion.
A second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Nope, nope, roll call, excuse me. I got it.
Say I'm up again.
Yes.
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 Leonard?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
We are in closed session.